You know how I channel the audio? I've seen that with this also here. Here, I have the whole picture now. I can see the guy speaking. But I can't do a thing.
We always hear a counselor say nay for the minutes. And pertaining to the O R S one ninety-two six five zero recordings or written minutes are required. So if our city manager is recording it. We should have no counselor saying nay to the minutes and calling her out saying she's not doing the job right. One that's here states, and this is as of two thousand and twenty-three. Governing body of a public body shall provide for the soundbidding of a digital recording or the taking of written minutes of all meetings. And as pertaining to this council member, let's remember he voted yes for the purchase of the property for two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. He also voted yes for proposing a tax base. He also voted yes for spending twenty-three thousand dollars, five hundred of it, for branding. Awarding contracts over five thousand dollars. He also again voted yes. Dennis was not demoted. His title stays the same. The person who will be reported to instead of being a clerical person with the public works. Everyone on the budget committee and counselor voted yes for that. When we miss the cell unused tractor, Alan voted yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mark Crouch. He didn't have a chance to fill out a form. He got here a little later, but he has his statement. He's gonna read. Sorry.
First off, I would like to actually thank the council for letting me correct the omission from that. I'm gonna go over a couple generals. They're already in charge. These days cut off. Really important, council, what hopeful solution on abatement? So that's a good thing. And shameless bud. There'll be two little things on the planning commission this year. So the notice will come out later. All right, now, now with the letters. The reason I'm reading this letter is because it was the last week. And I just want to make sure that we follow good open news in the future. So I'm gonna read it now, even though it might not retain because I see it's not on the agenda. Okay, spending fifteen thousand on a H R consultant. In my opinion, is an unwise use of money. Presently, Lakeside has numerous potholes on our city streets that need to be fixed. Abatement and code enforcement matters that needs to be addressed. As well as a, as well as city buildings and infrastructure that needs to be fixed. To declare, it's far more important to spend city funds that will be a direct benefit to citizens. Please note that if the city of Lakeside executes this contract and authorizes the production and distribution of biased information for the purpose of gaining citizen support for any valid measure, they could be in the violation of O R S two six oh point four three two. And we have, I included the magnitude, which all the Lastly, here's some free P R advice. If you want a victory in passing a city property tax that will almost double our current property taxes, you need to make a sincere effort to improve the citizens of Lakeside, the citizens of Lakeside. Include the citizens of Lakeside by holding town all meetings demonstrating how you will handle the citizens hard earned money, and most of us can't make it fast. And how you will spend it for the benefit of the citizens of Lakeside. Spending money on a P R consulting for what should be an unbiased campaign effort does not demonstrate that, and it will be an extremely corny time of the city's life. Well, just maybe. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right.
I don't have any others.
All right, consent agenda. On a consent agenda, we have the August seventeenth meeting minutes, August expense and payroll reports, monthly update reports from library and planning, which says there are no updates this month, and new legal license application.
A motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Yep. Which have been made by Councilor Herron, seconded by Councilor Wood. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to break up the August seventeen twenty three minutes.
So do I need to reset my motion then?
No, you meant to approve the consent without the August seventeenth, without number A or item A.
I amend my my motion to the consent agendas for items B, C, and D.
All right, motion has been made for item B. By Councilor Herron, and seconded by Councilor Wood. Is there any more discussion? Right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And no, no public questions are allowed in this?
No.
Was license, was that approval or denial?
It was under. Would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
The consent agenda is normal business items that take place without discussion. So they just approved it, yes, with what information was in the packet.
Can I get the information behind these?
It was in the packet. It's on the website and City Hall, you can get it. I can print you out. You got an agenda, but there's a packet that's available onsite or at City Hall. I can actually give you those. And you probably should do the minutes now, right after that, so we can move on.
August seventeenth minutes? All right, so. Do we? Yeah, go ahead.
Oregon legislature just passed H R twenty-eight. Oregon Ethics, the oversight over the public meeting. And they're going to toughen up some of their rules and regulations, like some planning and provide a better complaint system. So I think we need to make sure our amendments are changed as many as possible. Just as usual.
Yeah, there you go.
So H R twenty-eight opine was about for the Oregon Legislature, and that gives the Oregon Ethics Committee the oversight and, I suppose, punishment possibilities over Oregon meeting law violation. It also adds an easier and more streamlined way to complain, without the problem about meeting, about the public reading laws. So we need to keep our minutes proper or agendas proper and make sure we don't violate any of these. Now, I vote against the minutes because they're not, probably not, because I don't want minutes. That's kind of silly. So anyway, I will say on it.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the August seventeenth one twenty-three meeting minutes.
I second it. All right, motion has been made by Councilor Wood, seconded by Councilor River. Is there any more discussion? The only thing I know is I know that another dispute between you and the city manager regarding what is required and according to listening to both of you, it's, I mean, the city attorney said the same thing, that the minutes are being done correctly, so.
He said, his memo, which I can report again to you all, said technically by state, no, but that was before recording. So if we're doing recordings, we do not need minutes. If we are downloading and have recordings, you don't have to do minutes.
Well, but what are we approving?
Well, you're just approving, you're acknowledging is what you're doing. You're acknowledging it like you would if I was putting planning commission minutes, you're acknowledging minutes. A lot of cities aren't doing them. Counselor Pointer would like them to be done, and a lot of cities are still doing them. It's, it's, but tech, by the law, we don't have to do minutes anymore for recording. If we, he also mentioned in the memo that it, it's not a meeting violation, an open meeting violation, the way we are doing the minutes. So it's, you know, it's a preference thing at this point between Counselor Pointer and the council. And if you want me to start doing them the way Counselor Pointer would like them done, I will do that. It's just easier and efficient to do them the way I'm doing. And if we have a reporting and I don't do minutes or they don't get done, there's no open meeting law violation, there's no violation. It's the recording that you are approving. So that's up to a council. It's however you want to proceed.
So what, what are you doing that he's not approving? What is the difference?
I don't want to speak for Counselor Pointer, but I believe, and you can correct me, is the state says that every nay and yea must be identified. The, the the argument is if you identify who's at the meeting and you put voted six to one with Counselor Pointer voting no, you've identified the yays and ayes by default. You know who voted which way. It's very obvious. I don't want to say the older way. The, the way that people had done it in the past is you put each counselor's name in the way they voted, like a roll call vote, and essentially everything would be a roll call vote. So like I said, if you're, you know, Springfield and some of the other cities have already gone, they're just doing, I don't know what North Bend and Coos are doing, but a lot of cities, if they're doing recorder, recordings and downloading the recordings, there's no need for minutes. Because you have, you have everything.
What the Oregon Public Meeting Law says, when there's a motion and there's a vote, it specifies who voted and how they voted. Not unanimous or not unanimous, but one voted against or whatever. And so I think the government can play with the law. Whatever you do, folks decide. That's fine. But I might continue to vote no.
Okay, so. Can I get a margin bar? Oh, you did motion, did the motion and seconded. All right, so motions are made and seconded to approve August seventeen twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Derek Ton, the Director of the Small Business Development Center. So we have a lot of information to share.
I'm excited because we have a full room. So more people get to care about our services.
Great.
Again, my name is Derek Ton. I'm the Director of the Small Business Development Center. We have several divisions in Coos Bay and in Brookings. But we serve all of Coos County, all of Curry County, and Western Douglas County, and essentially as far as population concentrations, western Douglas means Gardner, Reed's Ford, and Winchester Bay. So if you can think from Gardner to the California border, from maybe the coastal hot range to the Pacific Ocean, that's the area that our Small Business Development Center serves. I think it's approximately about a hundred thousand Oregonians that live in that region. We have myself full time and we have three part-time advisors in our center. We have about ninety-five hours a week of staff time that we're dedicating specifically to helping to grow businesses along the south. We're funded by the Small Business Administration, by the State of Oregon, and by SWAC. And basically because of that, we provide, I think the very best service that we offer as a center is no cost, one-on-one business advice. Basically, a business comes to our center or a person with an idea for a business comes to our center, and they say, I have an idea, I have an opportunity, or I need help. Here's where I'm at. Help, or give me ideas or give me feedback. And we do that at no cost to that entrepreneur or business owner. It is a fantastic service that I think any small business can benefit from. A little bit of background on me, before I started working in the Small Business Development Center Network in Minnesota, I worked there for about three years before I came here to Oregon to run the center here on the South Coast. I ran my own business for about twenty-three years. I was having a problem with marketing. I knew what I was doing with marketing, but I just needed to figure out a better way to save money doing what I was doing. I went to my regional Small Business Development Center and I said, the person there met with me, it didn't cost me a dime, and they ended up saving me over twenty thousand dollars in the operation of my business. And when I say operated as a small business, I mean more like I operated a nano, like you think small, micro, nano. I operated a nano, a very small business. And to save twenty thousand dollars to me meant money, more money for groceries, more money to put away for my kid's college fund. So that made a huge difference in my life and my family, our financial well-being. So I said, this is amazing. How can I do this? So I learned kind of what needed to be done to become a business advisor. And I went to work in southwestern Minnesota, S B D C, which eventually, instead of running my business full time, doing S B D C work part-time, with permission from my wife, I got permission basically to do S B D C work full time. Give up kind of a day-to-day operations of our business, and I had never looked back. I loved this work. So for people, anyone in this room, if you have a business or you have, you're thinking about starting a business, then it doesn't have to be a big business. It might just be a part-time kind of a side hustle where you're looking to make an extra three, four hundred dollars a month, just extra money to help pay the bills. We can help. That's why we're here. We aren't going to charge you a dime for giving anyone in this room or anyone in the community free, no cost, one-on-one advising services. So when you say maybe how can we help get more money into the community, how can we do our part as a center? For every one dollar that we're given from the S B A, from the State of Oregon, and from SWAC to operate, we produce about six dollars in increased sales revenue that we know about in the community that are in the businesses that we serve. The number's probably closer to seven to eight dollars, but not every business reports that in that way we wish they would. But we know of just about six dollars for every one dollar that's vested in our center. So it's a very good R O I for the federal, state government, and for the college. And my biggest frustration is that just about, I think, probably every business in Lakeside is eligible to use our services, but very, very few businesses do. So we're here, we're waiting, ready to help. So if anybody has anything we can help with, please, please let us know. We have taken volunteers, although what I've done, I think it's, I think the best thing we can do for our advisors, by the way, we have four members of our team, and between the four of us, it makes us all sound a little older, but we have over a hundred years of experience between the four of us running businesses. We're not just like, we didn't read it out of a textbook, and then we're trying to tell people like what page thirty-seven in our textbook says. We've done it for decades, each of us. We've been people running business, knowing the day-to-day struggles, knowing the cash flow pains, frustration with taxes, and everything else. So we speak from experience and the work that we do. So I'm trying to think what else. Is there specific questions the mayor and council would like me to address? And I have a few other things that I could maybe mention.
How are you from the state organizations, federal?
Three, three sources of funding, the Small Business Administration, the State of Oregon, and the College.
And who funds your business organization?
Well, it's public monies that are being invested in those.
When you use your services, you're just using the money that you pay.
Well, and that's what I would say is that money, that dollar that we're given, it's your money. It's my money. I live here. We've all spent that tax dollar to
Still have a business.
Yeah.
All right. We're not here to debate.
But I was gonna, you know, but if we've already paid for it, if we've all contributed into it, if you have business, if you're thinking about starting a business, use the services. They're freely available to you. I would say there is one thing that we do charge for, and it's basically our costs, is when we have to offer workshops, where we have to bring in instructors or other types of resources to offer those workshops, then we do charge for those. Like we do have a program we're starting on October tenth called our Small Business Management Program. It's a nine-month program where every month we talk about a particular business topic, and then we have the month between classes to do one-on-one, no-cost advising, to help people either talk about questions they have about that program or any other questions that are going on in their business. I can leave with the mayor and council, or actually can leave with the city manager a copy of our schedule for that program. We, we don't, it's not a moneymaker for us. We don't want to make money doing it. We want to not lose money doing it because we want to be responsible with taxpayer dollars and not lose money. So what we've done this year is we actually cut the cost of the program. It's a three hundred dollar program over nine months. And people, like, other people, their first comment was, well, is that three hundred a class? We're like, no, it's three hundred for the nine workshop program. So there's things like that that we do, but a lot, I'd say, probably three fourths of the workshops that we offer are no cost as well. We're not wanting, again, it's not a moneymaker for us. We want to get the information out to the communities that we serve.
Sure. Do you have an online presence where the folks can see like a schedule of what your content is such?
We have a website, and actually I have my card. We're able to get a website, and there's a list of classes that's yep, yep. The other thing I wanted to mention as far as what we can do in Lakeside, for people who haven't yet started a business, we are working with programs called Co-Starters. And Co-Starters, it's not for people in business, it's for people with an idea to start a business, where we could bring that here and basically go through where we could bring that here and basically go through the content of everything that, everything you may not know that you don't know, uh, to start a business, kind of working to get you that information, and then working with you also that on financing, so you can determine if that's something that actually, like, your idea will actually be profitable enough to make you enough money for your investment of time. Um, so we have potentially an opportunity to bring a program like that to the community if we had enough entrepreneurs who are interested. And always, we're always willing to, if there's a particular workshop topic that's like white-hot in the community that everybody wants to talk about, we can always talk about coming here and doing a workshop in person, not over Zoom. During COVID, we had to do pretty much everything that we did over Zoom, and I don't know about you, but I have serious Zoom fatigue. I'd much rather have a handshake and be face-to-face with people around the table. So we can do that, like, we could come here and offer a workshop here, not force people to come to Coos Bay or look at us behind a screen. So that is always a possibility as well. Um, but please, please, the main message I want people to take away, if you have a small business or you're thinking about starting a small business, do not be shy about calling our center, we, we are here to serve in any way we can to get as much return out of those tax dollars as we possibly can. But is there other questions or?
I am.
And I want to stick around for at least the next two items on the agenda, because it directly relates, I think, to what we're doing as well. Um, and I have, uh, anyone who wants a business card, I'd be happy to share one, and then, uh, anyone in the, um. And there's SBDCs, our, our state director in Oregon likes to tease that we're the largest economic development agency in the nation. Because there's SBDCs in all fifty states, Puerto Rico, Virgin Islands, Guam, there's there in every location that's within the state of territory. Like, here in Oregon, we have twenty SBDCs around the state, but we try and work as a larger cohesive unit as best we can. So, and that's the beauty of working in a network as well. I, I certainly don't have all the answers to all the questions, but if I run into something I don't know the answer to, I can pick up the phone to my other nineteen directors of counterparts around the state and say, I've got this question, do any of you know how I can best deal with this? Because I haven't run it. Almost always someone will have the answer that I wasn't here.
Thank you.
And I'll just maybe hang out kind of back here so I can listen.
Alright. Thank you. That's up my head, add on a hand.
Hi, my name's Adam, I live here in Lakeside, I'm president of the Lakeside Business Association. Uh, I prepared some statements for you guys going back, like, uh, the meeting that went away, and I sent that an email, but I'm not sure it got put in the packet. I have copies here, somebody will write them. Because we got a lot going on, I'm trying not to read this verbatim, but I'll try to hit the important points. Uh, the first thing we want to talk about is we want to provide an update on the organization of the LBO. Yeah, in the last six months, we, we've been very busy with a lot of things that we'll discuss here, but on the side, what we're doing is organizing the, the, the the organization, that, that word will say a lot. Uh, and what we really did is we, we made sure we got all our filings with the state done. We, we filed with the IRS and told them what our intentions as an organization are. Uh. The next step and what we're in the process of doing is filing for our nonprofit status, and we're just about ready to send in that application. So now that we've got six months under our bail and we show them what we've been doing and where we're getting money, and, you know, and did not, now there's a pretty good chance that they're gonna, and, and from everything I've reading. Uh. The next thing I want to talk about were some kind of a debrief on some of the events that we did this summer. Uh, we did the Experience Lakeside, we had some stuff going on on the Fourth of July that everybody seemed to really enjoy, and then Timeless Treasures was an event that happened at the lodge. Uh, in June, the LBO organized, the LBO organized the Second Annual Experience Lakeside Event. The event included activities at several businesses, vendors along Park Avenue, food trucks at Wolfie Beach. We assured that all group requirements of permits were covered, including sanitation, trash collection, traffic, and parking oversight, event insurance, volunteers, and more. We'd like to thank the council for your support, the event was an overall success, we look forward to organizing the event in twenty twenty-four. Uh, in July, the LBO hosted vendors and food trucks at Wolfie Beach during the City of Lakeside's Fourth of July fireworks display. Again, this event, we assured basic essential services, and based on the comments we got, it seemed like everybody really enjoyed it, and they were kind of glad to see more than just a firework show, uh, around town on that day. And that was really the goal, is we, we as a community are investing quite a bit in that firework show. We need to try our best to, to get some sort of return on it other than a, an hour show. So that, we want to continue to try to help that fourth job and be have some return to our community. Uh. And then a few weeks back, it's been a couple of months now, that timeline changed. Lakeside Vintage was hosted by the Vintage Shop and Lakeshore Lodge, Timeless Treasures is what they called it, I apologize. And that event went well, it wasn't really organized by the LBO, but our members organized it, and their hope is that it can grow. I know they had a lot of vision, they got like, uh, an anti-folk club gonna join in for that week next year, and they want to try to get maybe some car people, or really anybody that does a celebration of, of the past, I think, is, is the idea behind that event. So if you have any ideas or thoughts on that, please share with, with David and Brad, who kind of organized that. If we can get behind it, they feel like it could be very, very positive for the community. Looking back at all these events, we think they were all fairly successful at attracting visitors from across Oregon. We believe that continuing to improve these events will help increase the reputation of Lakeside as a great place to live and visit. The LBO would like to cooperate with the city as much as possible on these events and bringing more faces in our community, so. As many times we say, if we want your help as much as we can. We know you guys are a small volunteer group with lots of new things. If we can help do that stuff and take that off your, off your shoulders, that is not. Uh, the third thing I had here on the agenda I wanted to speak about, I said, we'd like to discuss future events and how the city could possibly help make those events successful for the entire community. We'd like to note that the Fourth of July fireworks attract many more visitors to town than could be served by our efforts. We, we, we come in and we, we put lots of vendors in there, and we made sure that the, the visitors right there on the other side of the berm had some basic services, but I had personally never even been to Wolfie Beach during the Fourth of July. And when I stood on that berm and looked back over that park, there are thousands of people there, and it's overwhelming. And it was, it was notable that it would have probably been really difficult for an emergency vehicle to get in and out of there. It, there is nowhere for that thousand people to take them to the trash. So as, as a community, if, if we, if there's funds, if there's some efforts, if we can help, at least try, we might not ever really be able to control that crowd, but if we can try, we want to help. Uh, and then the last part is we'd like to have a discussion about cooperation and teamwork between community groups, volunteers, and the city of Lakeside. I don't know if it's a, if events committee or just better communication between groups in the city and all this. But I feel like if we talk a little bit and communicate and work together a little bit better, we can, these things can be even easier, they can be more successful. So I'm really encouraging that, like, some people are in, in the business organization, mentioned the, an events committee, and I'm not convinced personally that we need another set of meetings, we just need those same people to just communicate a little better. And anybody, anybody in here that wants to help us cooperate and make these events more successful with the community, we want to hear that. Yes, sir.
But we need to do something different, we need a police officer, I'm okay with this, I might agree with you. They come right down North Eighth Street here, we block them at fifty miles an hour from, 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 from market up here, from down East Street, on the same way on Airport Way. Unless we have something to stop it, it isn't running all the way. And we've almost, several people get down on Eighth Street, I put up signs down there, and, uh, I have a runner down there, I'm the first officer, this is another guy, he was a psychopath, he was one of my members. He started to get across the mill, to get his mail on the other side of the street, got hit and thrown in the dicks on the right side. And it's not going to go away until we get a police officer, from the general website.
Oral?
Where you can stop.
Oral? Up here? Oral, if you would like, you can come in and talk to Melissa, uh, city manager afterwards, okay? But we're, we're not, we gotta move on. Otherwise, we'll be here all night.
So, with, with, with those four things we discussed, you know, any questions you guys might have about the LBO, these events? Yeah, we, we got on the agenda, we want to be able to have this discussion with council and answer any questions you have.
I think you're doing an awesome job picking up the reins from the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, thank you. Add some timers, sometimes I remember, sometimes I don't. But, uh, I approve of everything you guys are doing, and we can do whatever we can to help you.
Yeah, we're willing to help out her and for some really neat things that you guys have put together and have been for the towns for a lot of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate everything you guys have done, and I think, um, the Fourth of July thing, there was a communicate, some communication issue, so maybe I'm not opposed to, yeah, directing maybe one person to talk and figure things out.
Yeah, I think we would, we recognize that there was a breakdown in communication there, and if we can just continue to try and improve it, I don't think it's a big problem.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, one last thing i- is that this was an idea, I don't know how, how far well it was thought through, but I know in the past, TLT funds were I don't know, had distributed to the former Chamber of Commerce, and they were able to take care of some of these things, without going on you guys' side. And in the future, our group may be coming to you guys and asking for, for, to help to help us fund that, you know what I mean? So keep that in mind when we, when we come and ask that, we're trying real hard, we really are. Uh, yeah, there are lots of different opinions about the business association and their goals, but really, we just want Lakeside to be as most attractive place to be for the citizens and for our visitors. We, we want it to be a fun, exciting place to, to live, and that's really our goal. It is economic success and stability for our community.
Can I also say that UTV Takeover? You've.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they could do that every year, I mean, that's good money.
Yeah, what, what Betty's mentioning is that several volunteers from the community, I think it was fifteen or twenty people that volunteered for UTV Takeover, and in turn, UTV Takeover made a over two thousand dollar contribution to our organization. Uh, they have mentioned to us that there are opportunities to fill more volunteer hours and make get a much larger, uh, donation. I think there's a whole campground somewhere over there that they got access to this year, and they asked us to manage as a, as a community, if we could get the volunteer hours and people together to manage that campground through that week, I think there's potential of over ten thousand dollars there. They, you know, if we all just go and hang out at, hang out at the campground and pull our four-hour shifts, you get free camping, and there's a lot of advantages to volunteering for the group, you know what I mean? It could just be a fun week and be a windfall for us all.
I think it's excellent to see just money.
No, yeah, if we, if we can get the support to fill those hours from the community, we can take on more responsibility.
Alright. Melissa, do you have anything? To add to that?
Um, no, just in, um, the background is, uh, the consultant who had put together our branding had proposed to do a tourism brochure for us. Uh, council was interested in getting local bids, and so we got a couple of bids. Um, and those are now in your packet, I brought them back for you for discussion.
Okay. Alright. Hang on, had counsel look at?
So this maybe would be taken out of the tourism thing?
Yes.
On the one for lookout, um, it seems like, I'm sorry, it might, sorry. Uh, this one from Lookout seems to be quite a considerably different price, like four times the amount. What are they supposedly giving us for that chunk of money?
I am not in the brochure industry. I know that, um, that I, it's one of those things where I've seen their work, I mean, I know what, I know what it is that they're giving us. Um, but it, it's a, it's a brochure you see in like the, when you go into hotels or you go into the restaurants and they have the three card. Um, I, I assume, I mean, the other bidders have the same information. Um, and so that's what they bid on. I, um, couldn't tell you why, um, I mean, I, I
All of these were given the same parameters?
They were given, well, it was the, the other two bidders, I assume, I don't know what the third one got. Um, the local person that bid on it was given the bid was saw lookouts and bid off of that, so I don't know. Um, the quote, you know, I don't know, I'm not an expert in this, I'm just, I got the bids the, from local people that the council wanted, and it's in front of you.
See, this one is, this one out of Washington is this item is taxed.
But, and there really isn't much to that one either, I mean, it's pretty vague.
It doesn't, it doesn't tell us anything.
Yeah.
Except a nine-by-sixteen, hundred-pound log book with four panel rolls fold. I don't know, I, I, um, I do like the cost of uh, handmade.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I can try to answer any questions you have without trying to influence your decision, you know, like, so if you have questions about what any of that means, I'm happy to answer.
You know, that's pretty much a self-explanation.
I think unless we invite the other, the other bidder to talk on it, we really should just consider what's in front of you.
Exactly. Well, your, your invoice is very clear. Alright. So. I do like the, I, like I said, I do like the, the cost. Um, I'm not interested in paying eighty-five hundred dollars or eighty-four hundred dollars for the brochures, um. And everything, everything seems to be the same. Um, so.
Good grief. There should have been an RF.
And we want to make a motion.
If you could ask for samples.
The same thing.
We have stuff right in front of us here, um. Does anybody else have any, anything?
Um, I, I like the price, I like all the information. I personally feel like maybe putting a pin in this one. Um, I just kind of feel like spending twenty-two fifty on brochures at this time, like, I don't know, I'm a little unoffense about it. I, I, I think it's a great idea, just maybe not. I don't know, I'm a little on the fence about it. I I I think it's a great idea, just maybe not right now.
Right, yeah. I would imagine they would be put in um different businesses like they have in um at the lodge, they have those display cases.
Right.
Would say Alan, I didn't hear you.
The, I I asked how they would be distributed.
My opinion on my brochure is I feel like at this time, that's not really appropriate to vote on put in uh spend money on twenty-seven hundred dollars or even a thousand dollars per brochure at this time. I think we have other things that we need to worry about prior to a brochure.
I totally agree with you. Um. Yeah, I'm I'm kind of on the fence too. I I know it's important and I know we need it doing it today, I mean, doing it right now, and I just not feeling that. We have so many other things that we have that we have to pay for and and spend time and money on.
I make a motion that we table this until the spring, twenty twenty-four?
I would suggest you don't table it, just you're not gonna, you're not gonna
Vote on it right now?
Um, yeah, you're just gonna, I would deny the bids because then in the spring, you don't know what's going to happen. There may be more opportunity to do a different type of RFP or a different type of where we can have everybody bid on the same thing, not just, I feel like this was disjointed a little bit. They presented and then we gave an opportunity for locals, which we will, we should have. Um, but I feel like the process could be done a little more efficient and better and fair for all. And so um I'd prefer we don't table it on this specific bids, but that in the spring, we come back and look at the process for getting tourism brochures again. Yeah.
I've met my my motion to to table to just we'll look at it later. And as far as deny this right now.
We have a motion to deny the bids. All right, motion has been made.
Bye. Who's second?
Thanks. Motion's been made by Councilor to deny the bids at this time. And it's like if I cancel or void. Is there any more discussion on it? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Was, what, what was that vote?
That is a yes.
Yes.
A yes for me, okay.
Okay, one, two.
I'll make sure. All right. The purple of purchase for new water work truck, which is a budgeted item.
Please, any questions you have, like you have to answer, so I heard it was likely to explain the purchasing process, etc.
Yes, please.
We belong to the state first, the program. Being part of that, very able to get, you know, tires, guys, there's we vehicles from the state. I was able to go through it and look at the three main companies that supply trucks that we were looking at. Are Dodge, Chevy, and Ford. I put out a real basic request for one ton pickup four by four with an eight inch bed with a four primer crew cab and a gasoline engine. And they dropped that with a had already negotiated with the state. But we don't need to negotiate any prices since we're already presented from the state. Uh, I did look at the four by fours just straight off, off the lot, it was offering, they're now running about seventy-seven, eighty thousand dollars. So we can see the price difference. And we all have the property of five times.
Yeah.
The the four trucks are via delay and you have to order, how how long? How is that okay? All of them have to be ordered? Oh, okay, yes, they do. And with the strike, who knows how long?
Yeah, they just started their strike tonight.
We were, we were looking at three to four months.
I noticed on the dogs that they did the top of the model, the L R M.
Yes, like I said, we were wrong pre-read by mistake. But he certainly don't need all those options.
There were bells and whistles on that, I wish I had.
What will we do with the old trucks?
Well, we have two, one years old. I'd like to keep the Toyota, but get rid of the uh Ford Ranger, which has been pretty practical because it's small. And it is spickier and so it's rather difficult to drive up and down hills.
Yeah.
Could you tell us what specifically you, you know, your needs are in pickup and what you'd be using this for? Specifically, we don't have anything to haul larger loads. We have a three hundred gallon tank that we use to flush lines that we actually put in the back of that auto. And we shouldn't, but the one ton pickup we handled. For those, we'd like to later on get a small skip of a generator to get out lines that we have. Even not not have to rely on order reader, the commercial, be like that. Also, if you like, we can put a rack on it so you haul large items, especially public works, as far as type of those and signs and things like that.
And this, these aren't duly, these are just single axles.
Yes, single axles. Have you looked at the, you know, the city bought a vehicle from the surplus, organ surplus vehicles? Really great price. Have you, have you looked into that? Yes, we did look at surplus, didn't have anything that we, that I need to buy. Any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any more.
Why, we can look at it's your meeting, mayor.
Well, if it can be still.
I was just, I was just curious. They're going for two small, more or less mini pickups. And all these years, all of a sudden, now they need a four wheel drive crew cab, eighty thousand or four by four one ton. We did all of a sudden the need and the usability go from one extreme to the other.
So we have the tender right now for the four wheel drive that we use.
Yeah, basically, what they bought, buy as a mini truck, half ton. You've been using that for how many years? And all of a sudden, now you need a one ton four wheel drive, eighty thousand dollar.
Well, like I said, you've been putting too much weight on it. It shouldn't have been handling it, you're going to break the truck down, break down already. So you follow what you need to try to figure out to handle all one one.
A lot of new tundra for fifty dollars, a new four, four by four one ton crew cab.
It's gonna be one, I was like, yeah.
I don't know where
Fifty-one?
Yeah, I worry. Yeah, it's fifty-one.
That's like an XL model, XL no, ten, three, no.
I'm just gonna stay civil.
Not arguing.
All right, so.
Read what? You just have to make the motion, it's a motion. All right.
I brought a lot here. And I buy a lot of pickups. Used pickups. And we, we can beat them up, we we use them and we abuse them. I bought a lot of pickups for a lot less, but used pickups that are that are good, that that give us good service for a quarter of the price probably that I'm talking here. So I I know that auctions out there, I know that those are available out there.
I don't recognize her voice when she talks.
I know.
That's not very good sound, is it?
How hard would it be to just look into his good fucking hands?
We we have some used vehicles. Prices are still really low than we thought.
Yeah, the used market's high right now.
Yeah. We we as well, so. Right. Oh, I made a motion.
Make a motion that we accept Gretchen Ford's bid for a Ford pickup for the price of fifty-one thousand forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
I second the motion. All right, motion's been made by Councilor Hearn. And second by Councilor Reddard. Any more discussion on it?
Our money's under the water.
Yeah, it actually was a budgeted item. We had budgeted for a new truck and pumper. And uh we budgeted ninety thousand dollars, so as you can see, we're way under. I I don't know, the pumper, I think you said is
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so we're, we're good with the budgeted money.
No.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Nikki, I told you to vote no.
Wait, who?
Yeah.
To nace?
No, oh, he said it twice.
Draw my head for a minute and you say it again.
She screwed up.
Well, she didn't do what I told her to do.
Oh.
All right. The purple, have I the idea for legal services to your land council of governments?
Now, so mayor, this is our um annual uh contract we have with the land council of governments that offers us legal services at a very reduced price. Um, and they do it on a scale of you'll pay no more than and then probably I can guarantee that our attorney doesn't charge us half of what he should when I call him or when he gets a phone call. He's not one of those that charges for every phone call. So um we do get a deal, it's for, they offer this service to small cities that obviously can't afford attorneys or have budgetary issues. Um, and if you'll notice, we just discovered that the contract was, well, you know, we hadn't renewed, so we're putting it on the agenda, kind of like we did the the uh engineers last month, you get these that come through and so uh this is on your agenda for you know.
I do see. Um, I did not get it fixed.
Oh, yeah, they use the same symbol with their other cities. I fixed it actually on my end, so.
I fixed it on my end.
Yeah.
Yes, just a continuation of what we're doing with
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Be the same.
I, although I think he's retiring soon and they've been hiring or trying to hire his replacement, so there will be somebody new that will be introduced to soon, I'm assuming.
Thanks.
And this is a yearly contract?
Yes.
It's a fashion, back in the June, to July first.
Yeah, to the budget.
I'm overly opposed to the intergovernmental agreement to, uh, here's the city attorney, he is for our city attorney and
Uh, motion's been made to approve the intergovernmental agreement by Councilor Quiner and second by Councilor Miller. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Hundred percent of the session, Councilor Nikki Wood has something she'd like to
All right, um, I have a paper here, that's available over there, just kind of organizing my thoughts. Um, but I placed this on the agenda because I wanted to cohesively and transparently inform the mayor and council of the information I've looked into and open up discussion of the council's thoughts on the matter. Um, in the background, I have been prompted by public comments made at city council meetings as well as input from citizens of Lakeside to follow up on our current code enforcement procedure. For example, um, at the June meeting, the council was presented with a petition to request for assistance of our city to assist with the cleanup and to for five regular lane. Um, this month, I have been doing a significant amount of research in the code enforcement. Uh, I have not only been educating myself, but also trying to find a solution to the problem of potential code violation. I spoke to several people trying to learn about this topic. I spoke with Jamie Mills, the city manager of Dune City, another city without a property tax struggling to stay alive. She told me that she is the sole code enforcement officer of the town. Um, and she can document, enforce, and place lanes on property that are not compliant right in the office with little administrative work. I spoke to Lori Price, a former city manager of Lakeside, who had bought a citation book and worked with Judge Gary Milliman to try to create a municipal court. This fizzled out for an unknown reason. I requested copies of all sentencing complaints related to nuisance issues and code violations dating back to January first, twenty twenty-one, full city manager. I contacted the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality with requests for additional technical assistance and possible funding. I also spoke directly to Judge Gary Milliman, brought me documents that he had created during this time, um, such as things like an abatement order, a notice to abate the nuisance, uh, a municipal judge agreement, a notice to appear in court, documents they had already started um acquiring for that process. In addition, he informed me that for the city to bring him in to clear cases and deliver verdicts of violations, it would only cost us three hundred and seventy-five dollars per court session. I've been in touch with Les Sanitary, Les and Stan Kennedy, who supports our town with the cleanup once a year. I inquired about any abatement services they provide, uh, so the container rental or what that cost would be. Um, and even what the cost would be for the city to put on another annual cleanup day. I was in contact with the manager who said she would speak to her higher ups and get me a price, still waiting to hear back. Uh, I would like to note that over the years, the city has performed full abaintments of the nuisance properties and all of which were completed successfully with abatement fees reported to the city. The current status, uh, currently according to our city book of ordinances, the city manager is overseeing investigating properties and sending out violation letters. But this has been unsuccessful for some properties. I know we have budget restrictions and we need money to be able to do this full scale. But we need to follow through with enforcement or fines for something to keep people accountable. We have a property tax, this would not be an issue because we can hire a full-time code enforcement officer to handle the whole department. Fortunately, we must work within our current limits, but that does not mean there's nothing that can be done. If you not understand the point of promoting tourism, if we cannot enforce our nuisance codes and nuisance and code violations in effective manner. Keeping our neighborhoods a clean, safe environment should be one of our city's top priorities. Next steps, um, if possible, create an advisory committee to develop to develop a straightforward and manageable plan to address code enforcement, abatement, and nuisance issues. Uh, revisit a municipal court and contact Gary Milliman about how we can use the services. Request the assistance of Peace County Sheriff's Office to assist them in the delivery of abatement orders and code violations. Um, dedicate us a lot of time during the week of the city manager and schedule to allow for code enforcement. Evaluate our budget and find more resources. COVID funds, uh, return the hearing complaints back to the city council. My recommendation to the councils, I request the council to hold a workshop within sixty days to discuss and develop a process that would effectively allow the city to enforce code violations and nuisance issues. I direct the city manager to take the necessary actions for its successful implementation. Thank you.
I have a question. How many court sessions does it take for each property to do this? You know?
Uh, I mean, from my conversation with Gary, it was, um, they come in, they're a notice to appear.
Right.
They come in and he can either mess a fine or they have a chance to say that, you know, defend their side. And then after the fine, that's where I'm not too sure, but I would like to touch bases with Gary as a council as a whole, kind of clarify some of those questions that I didn't get a full answer.
When he was here before, he said that, uh, you know, there's there's a process up to the point where he comes here. And a lot of the times, it's resolved before he ever has to come in, so that that cost doesn't, you know, it's taken care of, you get to apply. But in the event that they go he also said that uh, if you have more than one, he can handle for that three hundred and seventy-five dollars, he'll come up and here's two or three or that will make cases, we have not, not just her case, but
A question from Melissa, if she doesn't know, I mean, if she would let me know, um, so some Nikki said there were six full abaintments of nuisance properties which were successfully were completed successfully with abatement fees awarded to the city. Was that money ever collected? Because getting awarded something in the court is one thing, getting the actual money is a whole other story.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't know, and I had asked we all same mind, because I asked Nikki what those were, because I know there's and and I'm not saying, I I'm just saying there's two different types of abatement too, and I know the state in the past has done dangerous buildings. And called it abatement, too, where they've knocked down a building that's through a building inspector, that's easy. I mean, that's handled through a different way. So I don't know. I was, I asked, too. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I, I had done the whole digging on all that information. And, you know, honestly, that may not be a hundred percent. That is what I've been hearing from a lot of people. So, but, yeah.
That's something we can track down.
I'm trying to recover.
I was gonna say, I know about a couple that, I found old records where they just forgave them. I can tell you that on a daily basis, I probably get, I mean, average. I get two to three calls. Two to three calls a day average about some kind of complaint or nuisance or something that somebody wants done. A lot of times, they're not documented. It's something like, like the RV, they just called about the RV. We usually, within twenty-four hours, have made contact with the people. Because of the homeless thing and because of the new laws, you have to be careful. Yeah, the county would tell it, but if there's somebody in there, I guarantee their answer is different and the tags are up to date. And so we have to be careful. We did make contact. They are moving along. We give people grace. We try to keep them moving along and get resolution that way. We have a lot more code enforcement. I mean, I probably could, I mean, I'm serious. I'm not exaggerating. I could stay busy with code enforcement, probably forty hours a week, because there's just so much. I mean, I get things like bushes in the way of you can't see around the corner. And there's this RV and somebody's living in this guy's RV in the back. And there's, I'm not saying it's not a problem. I totally agree. It's a problem. The problem is the solution. And I think, I think if we can find one, I'm, I'm, let's do it. But it boils down to money and staff. And I think that if we can, if we can find a resolution, that's perfect. That's great. But there is a lot out there. And I think that another issue we have is our codes. I mean, I, somebody asked me if they could have a rooster today and, and people, you know, I spent thirty minutes searching through codes, trying to figure out if you can have chickens. Well, guess what? Our ordinance about the chickens was never finalized. It was never adopted. So I spent thirty to forty-five minutes of my time today running around trying to find an ordinance that didn't exist at the end of the day and have to tell this person that we don't have the normal ordinance that most cities have, that you can have chickens, but you can't have a rooster. And so I, I, and that's not exaggeration either. I mean, that's true. And when, when they're not codified, you're going through ordinance after ordinance, doing a search and trying to find, you know, putting in the words chicken, rooster, you know, trying to find through ordinances and I, I'm all for it. I am not against code enforcement. Believe me, I want to live in a nice town, too. If council can find a solution, I'm all about it. Let's do it.
Workshop. We're not gonna solve the whole problem overnight. We can take some baby steps or that way, I think.
Right, I've got one more question. What did DEQ tell you?
DEQ pretty much told me that anything above a certain level, so you know, environmental things, they can for sure handle, which I think there's quite a few properties in Lakeside that they're handling. I think they told me twelve.
Yeah, we've turned in a whole bunch. Right before Rob left, we had a list and we turned in a whole bunch to them. And we turned in actually some outside city limits, because.
At the end of the day, though, he's, you've got, it's your city. Your city's the one who enforces those things and it's their jurisdiction. So it's kind of, they can only do so much. Since I can give you some advice to talk about it.
What about any spending, extra funding? That's also our problem.
Yeah, I heard there wasn't.
Are we able to have volunteers?
No.
Your code report has to be staff.
Yes, because of liability issues.
Yeah, and I also asked Melissa, too, about volunteer abaintments. You know, like I was, I was talking to my dad and he said, you know, about how much it would be for one of those big containers. Let's say you're gonna go in and clean someone up. Could a, a company volunteer their time or their hours to do something like that? I don't know.
Oh, that I don't know either, if it's a company and it's got, if you're bonded and insured, that I don't know. That, that would be an interesting question. I don't know.
See, just things like this.
I think we should, I think we should schedule a workshop sooner than later.
I agree. I think we should, too. Thank you. Sure.
I know during the budget process this year, there was a line item that was discussed that had to do with, with code enforcement. And at that time, I think, and please correct me, Melissa, originally, it was gonna be left at a zero. But it was the, the will of the, the whole committee to put a small amount of money in that, even if it was just symbolic, to say we care about that subject.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, it's five hundred. Five hundred, yeah.
Okay, and in this process, that's our, our starting point, you know what I mean? And we need to keep this in mind for next budget process, that unless we set aside some money for this, it ain't gonna happen.
Right, right. We also, we, as a city, we are required by state law to do our planning and administer our planning. We don't have a planning permit tack anymore, and he wasn't doing the big files anyway, but we have to get somebody in for planning. I have reached out to some consultants, contractors, contract planning, people that do contract planning. It doesn't look real favorable. The charge, what they charge is, is a lot. And I don't know that our budget can handle it. I'm gonna, I, this is preempting my, my city manager comments, but we're on the topic. I, I gotta crunch, crunch some numbers and see if we can make a contract planner come in. And I, I kind of was floating the idea, like, will, would you be willing to, like, write letters for code enforcement, do some code enforcement? And the ones I've talked to were not interested in that at all. And so I did have another idea and it didn't work out. I'm so excited about it at first. But, you know, I, I'm trying to. I mean, I really, I think there's something we just gotta find. And we just have so many things that we need to pay for. And so if we have to break open the budget to get someone in who can do planning, it might be worth spending a little extra money if we can get somebody that has some kind of code enforcement or can do some kind of that kind of thing, too. I mean, if we're gonna spend the money and get somebody in-house. So those are all things we can discuss or I can keep, I mean, I'm gonna keep checking and looking into it.
Yeah, I, I actually would be kind of scared to send somebody out there on their own, just one person out.
Well, if there are code, yeah.
Just that a sheriff, like a very.
I don't, yeah, I don't know that the sheriff office would do it. I, I, jurisdictionally, I just don't think they're gonna do it. But I don't know. I, I can, we can ask. I actually wanted to do an IGA with the, the county. The county now has a new code enforcement officer and I was really excited and thought maybe we could do an IGA with them. Because they could take it through their hearing and just handle it. And when I approached him with it, it was met with some enthusiasm from the code enforcement officer, but then it never went anywhere else. So maybe it's just that we put some more, more pressure on them to maybe have those discussions with the county, because I really do feel like that maybe is our overall answer. That would be the best.
Right.
Meanwhile, we do gotta get our codes, though, because we have to get something done with our codes, because even Gary Milliman said, if your codes aren't straightened out and codified, I'm not, I can't do anything with them. And this code enforcement is not gonna write citations on something he can't find or doesn't know. And we don't know if they're correct.
Our code will need to be fixed.
Yes, right. But it costs, it costs, yeah, well, yeah, either that or you budget next year and spend a bulk of money to codify again. Yeah, it's priorities. And so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I get the phones out.
Yeah.
What's your calendars?
I don't have my calendar with me.
Melissa had also mentioned the, what to do with the property on Eighth Street, if we could maybe work that in with the workshop.
Two and ones, I think that was, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that the perpetual yard sale?
No, no, no. This is our, the one oh five, so.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at my book. Yes.
I'd really love to add, that I'm thousand percent excited about the code enforcement, but I might have to remind all of council on the goals that you set recently. Goal one point five is the camping ordinance. And that should definitely be included in this workshop. I mean, before the code enforcement could be the camping ordinance, which would take care of a lot of the code enforcement issues.
Well.
And was goal one point five.
Yeah, and to that point, I think if we're going to do a camping ordinance, I still don't know where they would put them. You probably should get your code enforcement at this point, if that's what we're interested in, in first, and then do your camping ordinance, because you can't do it until you have enforcement. If you get a camping ordinance in with no enforcement, it doesn't do any good at all, because there's nothing to, there's no procedure or anything to force.
Trespass. And they, before the sheriff's out, tell them right back.
Yeah, there's just, I, I, I think if this is a, if this is, if this is gonna move up in the, in your priorities, I mean, obviously, I still think the sustainable revenue is the most important. But you're gonna have to figure out a way to, to keep, to follow through. I mean, that's the thing, is we can write letters and there's no pushback. You can put liens on, that doesn't mean you're ever gonna get the money back. So you have to be willing that some money is gonna be spent. You may not get it back and you have to have that money disposable to go. This is all things you can talk about at the workshop, but I just the camping ordinance, I have another thought on that, too. And I've talked to LOC and even the LOC attorney has said, you guys, why would you even get one? Because you have no enforcement. You have no enforcement to enforce it. So I also think there's a point of where you're gonna put people. You don't have very much land in the city. So that's a whole nother discussion. If you want to discuss it at the workshop, we can do a workshop and do a half a day workshop and put topics on. You tell me and we will do whatever you want.
Okay, that's true.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Melissa, you said that you were looking through the rooster and checking codes?
I was looking through all the ordinances.
You told me two weeks ago, you guys didn't find it.
I, I, that's what I just said. I, we don't have it.
Yeah, that's exactly what she just said.
It was never adopted. It's in a draft form.
Sure.
Have anybody on the council that has to bring the code ordinance?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
Yes, we have.
How do you break down the elements of a particular nuisance? And then how do you raise the nuisance? The very much process starts with the city recorder manager. Very responsible for following the abatement procedure once you determine that a mission's exist. It doesn't constitute administrative, that's it. The seven, the seven cases, I have copies on, anybody who succeeds. The city successfully prosecuted in circuit court with a city attorney who actually sat in on me to file electronically with the court. And they get the court, have the word banned to its, and its clients to every case. The last one was a person that had an eighty thousand dollar judgment with a courtroom. But a council before you decided it's gotta break and forgive that eighty thousand dollars. But all the others were collected. It starts with your city recorder in the abatement process.
All right, so do we get back to send a date?
Yeah.
Or? No more time? I don't know what, I don't know my time. Everybody's gonna be working, so.
Okay. Hey. I'll either.
You can, you can do it on a, you can do it during the day, you can do it during the evening, you can do it on, you could do it on a Saturday.
Monday, Tuesday, my husband's home to watch the kids.
We lost our husband.
Well, it doesn't matter. So we looking at October?
Well, October is gonna be, October's gonna be really messy, because I, I think you're gonna have to change your council meeting for that anyway.
Yeah, we're just gonna be out of, yeah, we are, because we're gonna be out of town.
You have the conference and then you have.
On a Monday, Tuesday, for Nikki, we wanna do it sooner rather than later. We have the second or the third of October.
I could do the first.
Do you have, I guess, what information, I mean, how soon are you gonna need information and what are you gonna ask of me? Because.
I don't have time to get it, yeah.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I, if you don't need anything and you're just gonna have a roundtable discussion and throw thoughts out, and you have like maybe a couple of questions that I could get, or you want me to bring people in, I can do that. But if you're gonna want to deep dive into some statistics, I, it's not, I, I don't even know where I'd find it. I mean, he has files, but I know, I'm.
The second. We can send another, we can send another.
Yeah, 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 I like that. Okay, so we're looking at second or third?
I mean, we've got all the both days.
You know.
The Monday would work best for me.
The second?
Thank you. What time?
Um, afternoon, like two, three? I'm good.
I'm good.
Four.
Four. Four, four, sure. Four P M, October second, first of our.
Okay, is it just gonna be code enforcement? Are you gonna throw other things on there, too?
I think we should just give a code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like me to see if Gary Milliman can come?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Uh, question. Do you see October third?
October second.
The Monday.
Oh, excuse me, a Monday.
Oh, I have Wednesday. That's coming.
Okay, so.
That's on Thursday. Yeah, not Tuesday, not Mondays.
What Thursday is the planning commission meeting? But what Thursday is it?
You said they're planning coming in. Yes, that's on Thursday.
Yeah, and you have a.
A lot of meetings.
So it'll be October second, four o'clock for. Okay, that's the only thing we're scheduling in there? Okay. All right. Now, wait in the court.
What?
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 Therefore, no meeting. Waterhead, Councilor Miller?
I wasn't able to go to the meeting, but I did gather some information about what, so. They got, that's still a big project going, Benson Creek project, and they got another five hundred thousand bucks. Through some grants and even complete that project, which is, consists of some settling bonds and some things to reestablish a wetland. Um, there's been algae bloom observed, they have some toxin sampling next week. About that, the creek project needed a little repair to undo it, which has been completed. Did some modifications of the kayak launch in ELA to make it a little bit easier to get the kayak. And that's about it.
Water District, Councilor?
Oh.
Oh.
Just to comment, I wanted to just comment that I, I really believe that our biggest underutilized asset here is the lake. Take care of it.
Yes, I agree. Councilor.
I apologize, I did not go to the water board meeting. It was my husband and I's nineteenth anniversary and he gave me a ride in his dump truck.
You have to go to the floor.
You need to take the girl out of the truck, which can't take a truck out of the girl.
All right. Animal Association, Councilor Reddard? I wasn't able to, and I'm sorry. Wow. Fire District, Councilor Poyner, I know you were there.
I was there. Uh, we talked about, all, and general things that we were dealing with, the possibility of buying a reduced fire truck from the local departments in the area. The number of fires and calls that occur on the north side of their land tract, which turn out to be about two thirds of them, uh, which is the reason we're looking at the property to build a station on the north side. And talked about some possibilities for that. And, you know, now, um, that's about it.
Okay. Next side business owners, Councilor Smith?
They only have a meeting once a quarter, so their next meeting is next month.
Keep stoning up. I'll keep asking.
Okay, I'll keep answering.
All right. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me, there's a few items. The first one is for council, when you are at LOC, LOC always has an annual board.
Um, the first one is, uh, for council, when you are at LOC, LOC always has an annual, um, board. Um, they vote in their board of directors. Uh, the way it works is they give the cities one vote, so each city gets one vote to vote for their board of directors. Um, so you have to tell me who you're going to have place that vote while you're there. Um, October fourteenth, it's a Saturday at eleven thirty, um. And they need to know by the twenty ninth of, uh, of, of, of September, so I have the form. Um, and last, you know, cities I've worked in, they've nominated, the mayor does it, I've done it before, a councillor's done it before, so it is whatever you, whoever you want to, to do the official vote, you all need to decide and tell me so I can fill out the form, and that's the person who will have your vote.
Alright.
I need to know. Tell me who it is.
I'm looking out.
Yeah, that would be nice. So I can fill out the form and get it in, since we're not meeting again before then.
I volunteer the mayor. My second.
But you don't have to vote, I just need to know what you, you can just nod your heads, you're all agreeable that the mayor deals your vote for the board of. Perfect, got it, I will submit that form. Um.
Check.
Probably. Probably, probably one of the more important meetings I had and serious meetings I had this, uh, last week or two was with the Department of State Lands. And as you know, when we did their, um, assumption of agreement, I G A, um, there was a possibility they were gonna ask for reduction in sewer. Um, I will tell you, they went into the meeting, we had, that was the intent, is that that's what they were wanting and wanting to do, and, um, I, I am gonna take kudos for this, I talked him out of it, so, um, they, they, they are going to continue paying the full price, which is now at like seventeen thousand with, with the, um, new. I don't know for how long, so whole deal was, um, they may pay in a couple of months and come back and say, well, we, we rethought. So, um, for now, um, they, they are encouraged, um, I, we talked about Lakeside, we talked about things that are happening in Lakeside. They wanna be proactive with the city and help and do their part. And so, um, for now, they are continuing their payments, and we did get the first one, so. Um, which is, that's a good thing. Um, if you haven't noticed, you need to go out and notice, uh, go to our library, we have a new, uh, bench. As it was sitting out there on a pallet, if you saw it, gorgeous, gorgeous bench, it's the library bear bench, it was donated by Mr. and Mrs. Richard Felker. Um, and it's going to be placed, um, facing the street near the bike rack, and so they picked out a spot, um, okayed it with me, and I said, it's good. And so we will be placing that, and, um, hopefully it'll bring some joy to us when we go down there, I plan to sit on it. Um, yeah, and then, um, trainings on, oh, let's see.
Back to Tuesday.
Oh.
I think Mike got up.
We went to trainings on Friday, the eighth, I got several trainings talked about. On Friday, the eighth, some council members and I went to, uh, fundamentals, LOC fundamentals training, which featured, um, contract rules for cities, how you address difficult meetings. Um, and then, um, some numerous other things, I encourage you, um, they call them LOC fundamentals, and if you've been to a hundred of them before, they're always different and you always learn something. Um, LOC is probably one of the best agencies I've ever seen for putting on training and, and telling you how to do your job, and so, um, that was wonderful, and it was a long day, we also went to Planning Fundamentals for Oregon, so, um, that's some history of planning, so that was good. And then, um, speaking of training, um, LOC does come and put on training for city councils for roles and responsibilities. Um, they will do a one hour class for you. Um, the, the one issue is they do charge, they used to not charge, now they're charging, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, they figure it's an hour class. They do have a Zoom option, it's not as, it's nice, but they will do a Zoom option, which I think takes away, um, some of the travel expenses, you would have pan top about a hundred and twenty-five dollars if they came here, so, um, something to ponder and think about. If you are interested, let me know, um, and we'll, we'll, we'll get a vote somehow at a meeting for you guys, so get it on the agenda for a vote, if that's something you're interested in doing.
Yes.
Um, if you know right away, you can tell me now and vote, but.
Just one thing in reference with the training that you guys went on Friday, um, you get help that you, I was named with ten, so I will be reimbursing the city.
Oh, you don't have to, somebody took your place, so you don't have to, yeah, you're, you're a wash.
Okay, cool, thanks. So, I was the one that actually, uh, called Robin, who's one of the legal aides that did the workshop on Friday. Um, uh, part of the workshop was, uh, Jessica from our friend, the mayor came in and she did a presentation, and said that it helped her city council to really get to know their roles, they were having some difficulty with a particular council member, and I thought since five of us are pretty much brand new, I thought it would be a good thing, if we, if, if everyone else thinks so, that it would be good for us to know our roles as a city councillor and the mayor, as the mayor, since we don't really have anyone to tell us, like, what we're doing wrong, we, you know. Cuz we don't know, so I just, I, I called Robin myself, I sent her an email, I CC'd the city manager about how to get that started, and asked them to get ahold of the city manager and let the city manager know the response to it, I thought that it would be great for all of us, and since, uh, councillor pointer and councillor Miller have been here, I, I thought maybe you guys might like a little refresher course. And cuz there's new laws and stuff that have come out since.
Well, I think it'd be great.
So, I just thought it would be a great idea to each tell us all our roles and kind of help guide us on how to be, do our jobs.
You do have, um, because several of you got scholarships for the, the, um, League of Oregon Cities Conference. Um, that saved a ton of money, and so you do have money and training, training still, that you could use this for. So, if you're an agreeable, you can do a motion, and then I can get the ball rolling, but if, if you wanna wait and do it at a different time, that's fine too.
I should, yeah.
So, I need a motion to.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion that, uh, we have a, we have LOC come in and do a training course to teach all of us city councillors and the mayor our roles.
Alright, so a motion's been made by councillor Smith.
Councillor Miller? It was pointer, it was either pointer or wood.
It was second and thirty.
Okay, um, oh, vote.
Is there any more discussion on it? Hey. Um, all in fair?
I, I, I.
Okay. Um, I will contact the league and, um, get in touch with what dates, uh, have them give me some days and times, are you wanting, do you have a preference for Zoom or in person? So, that will be the hundred and twenty-five, if it goes over that long, you'll have another, you know, it could be, we're talking maybe five hundred dollars. We have the money, the budget, cuz you saved a bunch with your scholarships, so you're good there, so I will, um, set that up for you. Um, and I'm not done yet, uh, so, uh, Tricker, Trunk or Treat is on Saturday, the twenty-eighth this year. Um, that's the same day the fire district's having their haunted house, that's a Saturday night. Um, we do have an event permitted for that, to use Park Avenue for the trunk or treat this year. Um, my question. Or preference to the council is, would you like, last year, the city had a, a vehicle in there and gave out candy. Um, since it's on a Saturday night this year, does council want staff to be there with a vehicle and give out candy? Is that your preference? Um, the other alternative is, we have saved our cans and bottles. Um, staff does, I know council bring them in, well, this has been like a voluntary thing that we do, we have money and miscellaneous revenue, that's what that's for, is trunk or treat, and we could give, take, you know, a thousand dollars and give, and buy five hundred dollars worth of candy for the trunk or treat and five hundred for the haunted house. Um, or we could get our vehicle and we could do, buy candy and have a vehicle at the trunk or treat, so it's up to you, I'm looking for direction.
We have, we have the the controversial tractor over there.
We did have the controversial tractor, it's very nice, and I, yeah, we filled that bucket up with candy. Yeah. I thought it was pretty cool. Yeah, in my past life, we always had a vehicle, I mean, the city always had a vehicle, I wish more agencies, I wish the water board and fire, well, fire does their own thing, but oh, could, last year, we could, yeah.
Maybe we could encourage some businesses to be able.
It would be nice, yeah, so I am hearing from you that you would like the controversial tractor down there again, okay. Alright, I'm still not done, um. FYI, the customer accounting clerk, she's gonna be on vacation from the eighteenth to twenty-second. So she is officially gone, as of now, I'm going to miss Tina for that week, we hope she comes back. And, um, so for that week, for that week, we just want the public and council to be aware, I think I might have emailed you already, but, um, to be aware of that. Um.
Oh.
Council chambers might be shut down, the council city hall. Um, I will, I guess I can get graphic enough to explain this, so it doesn't show up on social media. Um, and when I am by myself, um, if I have to use the restroom, I have to lock the door. So if the door is locked at a weird hour, wait five minutes if there's not a sign up. I will put a sign up if I'm gone to do banking or accounting, I have made arrangements where I won't have to do banking and accounting, so that shouldn't have to happen unless something funky happens, but we should be good to go, I should be here, um, for the hours, and, um.
Yeah.
So we just wish Tina well and hope she comes back. Um. I gotta put my glasses on for this now. Um, the LOC conference is the eleventh through the fourteenth, um, and our next meeting is the twelfth. So that means we will not be here for our next meeting, so, um, staff is proposing that if it is the will of the council, that we change that to the twenty-sixth of October. So that we have time to get back, get oriented, and I have time to put packets out, as of this moment, there's not that much on your agenda, but that can change.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth of October. Cuz I think almost everybody but two will be in.
The next meeting.
Will be in.
Oh.
Eugene, okay. Um, and then, just wanted to touch on a couple of things that came up during public comment. Um, as I said before, the RVs, we try to make contact within twenty-four hours, um, the airport fence came up. That fence was bought with grant money, and so, um.
Oh.
There, that was a different pot of money that couldn't be used. I will say, um, the county has money to fix the pot, the manholes. Um, so, I have not heard, they were trying to give us the money to do the work, and I'm, I'm, where, I think we're gonna say, county, if you have the money, do the work. So we don't get into the problem we had with this S C A county and O dot rails, trying to correct and get all that money back, so. Um, it just becomes a nightmare switching money from agencies, so we're gonna try, um, I'm gonna call in to Paul Slater and just, you know, they have the money, is what he's told me, and they're gonna, they should be able to fix those manholes. So, um, again, county issue, county will fix it, um, they did budget for that, hopefully, they still have the money. Um.
I don't.
And I had something else that just slipped my mind, so I think that's enough for tonight. Yeah, oh, sorry, reimbursement on the, the railroad grant, or the railroad project. We are two thirds there, I have, I am waiting on money from O dot rails, I have, S C A has been, uh, submitted and approved, so we should be getting a check from them, um, soon, and we already got the check from the county, so now we're just waiting on O dot rails to get those revised amendments back to us, so we can get our money from them, and then that project will be done.
Okay.
That is all.
Awesome, okay. Alright, council comments, councillor.
You do that too well.
Years of practice. I wanna thank you all for attending, it was a great turnout, I was happy to see all those cars up in front, a little scared, but it all worked out good. I thank Derek, he's still here? Or?
No, I think I screwed it up.
Yeah.
He had great information, um, been at several, uh, meetings with him. They are wonderful people, if you have a business, please call them, even if you don't know if you have any problems, they can help you get problems. Um, I wanna thank Nikki for all the information and, and the work that she's done on the, the code enforcement, and I'm like, we got a meeting going on. Done really good. And, um, even before all the hoopla was going on, I was thinking about having a town meeting. Where, uh, you could submit a question in writing, exactly how you wanted it asked. And then, like, two weeks after the deadline for the questions, we could have the town hall meeting, where we will have the answers for you. I think that would be a, a good idea to have. Um, we can discuss, um, when have questions submitted and when to have the meeting. Um, this way we can stay off of social media and get it exactly answered, the truth, and not a bunch of speculation. Um, I wanna thank Les's disposal for their dumpster diving, um, this last weekend. Um, from what I understand, where there's a lot of places that did get cleaned up, I live on North Eleventh, and there was a lot of vehicles going past my house all full of debris, so, it was an awesome deal. Thank you, Melissa, for coming back from New York. And, uh.
I don't live there, I was vacationing there, not from there.
And doing the awesome job that you have done so far.
So, let's see, thank you for being on Zoom and everyone that showed up to the meeting, it's really nice to see a full house and see if people wanna participate, uh, thank you Nikki for your hard work. I know it's not easy to do these two small ones and make all these phone calls and get your ducks in a row. Uh, thank you, Melissa, for all your hard work and always being available to answer questions, thank you to the council for volunteering your time. Um, I did wanna, um, hit on that, uh, again, Sarah, who is going to be doing her trunk retreat again this year on Park Avenue, so she's always asking for candy, um, she said that you can, if you wanna donate candy to her, you can drop them off here at city hall, or at her little shop next to the post office, also the fire department needs candy for their, their little Halloween, um, haunted house that they put on, which by the way is fantastic, it's my favorite thing to do. And then also, city halls, we need candy here, so we can fill up our tractor again, cuz last year, I was there with her, and it was fun watching them kids just come and get handful of candy with that tractor. It was, it was a lot of fun, even when it was raining, it was still fun, um. And I can't wait to do our workshop with the code enforcement, maybe come up with some new ideas to get something, something done, or at least a direction of where to go, and, uh, that's it.
Alright, Nikki.
Um, well, thank you, council, for being willing to listen to my little speech, and I know all of us, all of us up here really wanna try to get something done, and we will do everything we can to try to figure out some sort of solution. Um, to work within our limited resources, but having a clean, safe town is important to all of us, we all live here, and got kids here, so it's very important. Um, and I wanna thank Derek, this is the second time I've heard him talk, and I've actually reached out to him on my behalf, cuz I wanna bakery here one day, so, um, he's given me some really great information, so it's, it's good, you guys should reach out to him, and, um. Yay, I look forward to my workshop, thank you guys for scheduling that.
Wanna thank everybody for showing up tonight, it's always good to see people here. Um, Melissa, thank you for everything that you do and for always being available when I have a question, whether it's during a meeting or during the day when I come by your office. Hate to be a pest, but I am. Nikki, thank you again for everything that you've looked at and calls and everything you've done for the code enforcement, it's a very important thing, and everybody in town, this is one of their most felt, strongly felt problems that we have. And we've got a great little town, and we want it to look quite as great as a town, so thank you for that, and looking forward to the the start of the meetings to see what we can get done, and to remind everybody, if you have a question, please come speak to us. Ask us directly. There's been a lot of things on Facebook about complaints that we're not approachable, we're not talking to, and I personally have never been approached by anyone that is behind this recall and to ask me anything. And it would be really nice if you would come and ask me, again, thanks everybody for coming tonight.
Yep, hey, with everybody, thanks Nikki for your all your hard work, really, I mean, that's good job, great job, and Adam, thanks, thanks for coming here and, and presenting tonight, and your all your hard work. I don't wanna belabor the point, but I appreciate councillor Ward's efforts and plus to clean up wayside. I, I was sure through the whole Eric Donald issue, I know a lot more about it, but you gotta try, and I'm like, great, appreciate it, appreciate it, everybody.
Alright, well, I would like to thank everybody for showing up, um, I think the more people come and they get involved, the the better off we are, um, I would like to thank those of you who have been very supportive of us. We are a brand new council, ex, with the exception of the Q, um. And, and I'm new to this as well, but we learn by doing, and we are learning. Are we perfect? No, nobody is. So, but I just ask that you please have patience with us, but thank you. Um, again, we are approachable, anybody, everybody knows where I live. And everybody has my phone number. Call me, I can meet you anywhere and have a civil discussion, don't have a problem with that at all. Thank you Melissa for all your hard work. Um, I know we drive you crazy. And, um, I'm not gonna apologize because I like it. Thank you Nikki, for all that hard work, raising two little kids and the stuff you do and I don't see of it, thank your husband, so. Yeah. For cooking good food, yeah, that's it. But I would like to thank all the councillors and everybody for their help and for volunteering the hours that you do, um, between the training and the meetings. And, um. I think that's it. Alright, I'm leaving the turn.